Next we've got approval of amendments held on Mayor Sutton, twenty twenty-four. I've got motion and second. Go call please.
Ms. Woman King.
Aye.
Ms. Martin Reed.
Aye.
Ms. Woman Tipples.
Aye.
Vice President Urban.
Aye.
Ms. Woman Douglas.
Aye.
Ms. Woman Smith.
Okay, next we've got recognition awards that were done on here, adoptions of resolutions. We have a resolution, amending the resolution number twenty-one sixty-eight, public participation, adopting the rules and procedures of votes of city council meetings and revising public participation from four minutes to two minutes. I make a motion?
Second.
Now public participation, you have four minutes.
I'm gonna walk off, seven thirty, before I tell them this, but it was pretty bad. I came in after a dinner, I told you guys about what's the participation of the public. And I hear a long black belt, nineteen fifty-six. I was standing about fifty meters from North Coast. And I saw a lot of red zone, force people. Force people to get off the course. And they stood over the right as they worked, and they had no sense of it. And one time, they called me, bowled a water, right, back to work. Two months later, I found myself in North Korea, I had a friend. He was former big con for Tony, who had been kidnapped from his parents when he was nine years old, and then adopted him to come live. He was wounded by our forces, and while he was recuperated, he became a QO, which means he came over to the South. He was very courageous and loyal to the guys that he served with. And he and I eventually ended up in the Union. Some of y'all might have heard of the Pink program, I was in the Pink program. And what it did was, the big con was bullying people, so then the Union that I was in started bullying the big con. They hunted people, and we hunted terrorists. And when I come in the night, and I said, the privacy, the record, and the pledge of allegiance was running. The flag that I saw was gone, and the oath that I took, and the Constitution that I read, it don't tell people what they can think. It don't say that you have to like exactly what I said, because I have a freedom to say it. And I think these rules are really sad rules for a country that's supposed to be land of freedom and home of liberty. People, you don't have to like what they say. I sit there for eight years, I didn't like everything that people said, but they had the right to say it. I had friends that I grew up with, they died making sure people had the right to say it. We sit there, I realize we got to help the dying, man. I think two minutes is not a lot of time. We sit there one night, a lady came, and she didn't like the idea of what's ready to be for the police department, and I think it was the Estorit, uh, penance, it was a hundred dollar fee. She put a thousand pennies up on that banner table right there. She spoke for over hours, and the rules kind of changed then until they did for the time that's there, so we weren't being out of line. But I think two minutes is ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Austin. Mr. Plow, please state your name and address.
Gavin Club, fourteen Mississippi Avenue. So, the first question is, I did it for minutes, maybe I was a little long, but two minutes is not long enough to ask one of the one question, coherent, but, and by the time you give your name and address and ask the question, you're almost out of your two minutes. So, it seems like three minutes would be a reasonable thing, or an alternative would be based on crowd size, so that if you have, you have a room full of people, you have more than fifty people in a room, then maybe reduce it to two minutes. But there's really no good reason, and I heard them say that the legislative auditors requested this, I really doubt that the legislative auditors, I talked to them today, I really doubt that they said that you need to reduce it to two minutes. They said get control, there's other ways to get control of this beyond limiting public participation. I, you know, so can we come up with something that's more reasonable, two minutes, three minutes? It's not fair to people who really have questions to be asked, and it really does need a lot of participation. So can we come up with something, go back to the drawing table and come up with something that's a little more equitable and reasonable? You know, like I said, I get, when you have two other people in here and they all want to talk, that four minutes per person is not feasible, you know? So you can, you can come up with something that, that's scaled to whatever the issue, you know, the need. I, I don't see a problem with that, and I don't think anybody else would have a problem with that, but a blanket thing, two minutes, is not necessarily, wouldn't be necessary to hit, you know? So why do it?
Thank you, Mr. Plow.
Deborah Corsetti, seven six four, Marshall Richardson, Madison. I just want to read a little bit of an article here that talks about public participation. It's written by the National Civic League. It was compiled by working group on legal frameworks for public participation, a group made up of representatives from the International Municipal Lawyers Association, International City County Management Association, American Bar Association, National League of Cities, National Civic League, Policy Consensus Initiative, National Coalition for Dialogue and Deliberation, Deliberative Democracy Consortium. And within this article, it talks about, um, citizens are usually given three minutes of time to ask questions or make comments. So I just want to put my two cents in, along with all of these people that agree that three minutes is an equitable time.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Mr. Plow, please state your name and address for the record.
Get up to them door, man, find a way to go off the street. I just want to simply say, I think if you can't keep it as it is, uh, don't, I mean, change it, don't change it, because also, no, sometimes it take y'all a little more than four, five minutes to answer the questions in front of the public that we have, you know, questions to you, so. I had to really deal with those, I've been talking to say, if we don't go up any, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plow.
What?
Mr. Farrell, please state your name and address for the record.
Faith Farrell, nineteen thirty-one D with place. We fought years ago, you all been running in and even in the world, and we fought to get freedom of speech. People always live lives to get freedom of speech, and here you all represent us in this city, trying to cut out of four minutes to two minutes, that is ridiculous. If you all are going to hear what we got to say, resign and go home, because two minutes is not long enough to set your address and stuff like that, time you do it, then two minutes is gone. Let's stop all this crap. We got more important things than voters can do, to do than sit up here and argue about y'all want to take our four minutes from us. Find something else to do, pass the budget, stop all these victims around with our tag. When you all, oh, y'all got to speak, y'all speak only in two minutes, and don't be saying anything welcome why. So why y'all want to talk about cut us down? We put y'all here, we pay y'all salary, respect us. If you all can't hear us, Miss Kate, we will remove you all. I am really pissed off at you all about trying to cut our tag down to two minutes. When I say pissed, I mean pissed. It's ridiculous. Mark, you should be ashamed of yourself, putting this on the jury, because it don't make any sense. You all been in this world when we were fighting to get freedom of speech. I am really mad. So let's get right and leave that four minutes back on the board, and cut out this bullshit crap.
Mr. Farrell?
What?
Uh, Edith Preston, six forty-one St. Augustine Street. I, I'm gonna have to agree on this four minute thing, and when you guys decide to dispense rules, you wait till the very last minute. We didn't find out until last meeting that the time was gonna be cut back to two minutes. We get here to this meeting, and like you said, we spent so much putting in what, controlling the public instead of the council. Y'all don't want to hear from the public, because you want to do things the way you want to do it. Now, I agree with the lady, three minutes, let's whittle it down. I also agree with her, if you have an overpacked room, let's put guidelines in place and not make it one way, just your way, because when the council messes up or does something wrong, they don't get the same recommend as we do. So all we asking for is equality, period, on both sides of this aisle, and I'm tired of every time we come in here, it's a new rule for this, or we taking this away, or we cutting this down. Well, if you know how I, why do we need the council? Y'all need to really, really sit back and look and think about some of the actions you're doing, and for the reasons you're doing. I'm not calling any names in here. As a matter of fact, I think everybody is responsible, but when you come in here, it's this person, that person, it's not weak, because Buckalosa is about weak in building the city up, and we can't do that if you continuously try to tear the public down for being involved, that it's just a little quick, it's unreasonable. Washington Parish Council don't act like this, they're mean. They don't have the care, and they have multiple little small little township. It is very orderly, it is very pleasantly, and it flows without all the flair. Why can't we use that guideline in Buckalosa? It is a part of Washington Parish and not just Louisiana. You guys, y'all got to go to the other room and say.
Mr. Corsetti, please state your name and address for the record.
Richard Corsetti, seven six four, Marshall Richardson Road. Ladies, I don't care what you say, you're public, I'm public, but let me tell you what, I want my four minutes, and I want a full packed room, and I want everybody to hear what I got to say. I don't care what you're hoping, three minutes, two minutes, I want four minutes, right, Mr. Farrell?
Right.
Okay. Now, Mark, this is it, did you decide this, Mark, yourself? No.
Who came up with that idea?
Who come up with the idea?
It, it was a suggestion by the legislative auditors, I maintain that, and also a suggestion by some of the employees in here.
Oh, the employees in here? What employees?
There were some employees that, that put their input, I asked them, I said.
The police department?
No.
The fire department?
No, no, I'm not going to.
Okay, Mark, Mark, next council meeting, I would like a paper from the legislature stating that they want to cut down with their signature. I'd like to see it, Mark. You promised me that.
They said, they said.
I don't care what they say, it's under control, so we can want the two minutes.
Mark, I want to see the paper agreement, I want to see the paper, Mark, that they sent, let them send you one, and then we'll agree to the two minutes and see what's going on. Okay, Mark? We just want to say they said, he said, we said, I said.
Thank you, Mr. Corsetti.
No, thank you. Four minutes. Okay, thank you. And keep it up to four minutes. Okay? Now, the other thing is, if you go according to the way the rooms work, if we got a full stacked house, we probably do need to cut it down a little bit. We'd be here all night, and we happy. But if you council agreed to the mayor of what he needs, and the way it needs to be done, there wouldn't be a full stacked house here. Everyone that comes here is not mad at the mayor, they're mad at you guys. And you don't listen to the public at all, just like when you put his vote in and voted for him. Michael? Right. When they put your vote in, they didn't, they didn't want that lady, they wanted to, and I'm not against that, but what I'm against is, that's what the public want, and that's what we're here for, the public. So y'all need to remember that, respect the public like Mr. Farrell says.
You want respect, get respect.
That's right. And I'm, I'm one, I'm one to say that. I get respect from everybody, because I'm good to people, and I understand. So I just want you all to know, Mark, I'm looking forward to that paper on the table, or you better table this, thank you.
Donnie Soles, six twenty-two Union Avenue. I guess I'm gonna be the eyeball. I think it's a good idea, but don't be minutes. The legislative auditor wants these meetings under control, and even right now, I almost got out of control just in a little resolution. I mean, I go to church on Sunday, I hear good sermon, I mean, I'm sitting here and hear two, three of them meeting night, especially the same old stuff every meeting night, the bag this one, bag that one, same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keys Merrill, I to the family score street department settlement. All of this legislative, all of the crap, y'all, we being played for a starting food up there. Everybody in here is grown, and in their right mind. So y'all, Mark, you can stop that laughing about the legislative officers. You go on your job, and your boss taking you to stay home, you gonna do that if they paying you money, but you feel like listening to us, we ain't nobody. Pride goes before destruction and the heart of spirit before a fall. If y'all can't listen to us, it's time for y'all to fall on election day. It's time for y'all to stop being out there and be somewhere and doing something what y'all want to do, because y'all don't want to be bothered with us. So if you go ahead and pass this, we need to go ahead and do what we need to do and get rid of all five of y'all. You may not listen to us tonight, but you gonna listen to us on election day, have a great day, anything.
Ladies and gentlemen, eight two sixty seven Street, Buckalosa, M D C M. On that, I just want to say this, it's your decision what y'all challenge it to, but my opinion just don't mean, um, I think that it should stay the four minutes when it's we talking about something that is important, but my other thought is, when it get out of control, you know, go down, just cut it, if y'all see it's out of control, just cut it to two minutes, but we have a lot of things to discuss, and people won't, you know, they telling, so will y'all just consider that if it gets roughly out of hand, just cut, cut it to two minutes? But the ones that up here and want to get things done, you know, doesn't have that four minutes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plow. All right, now we're gonna move on over to, uh, public particip, I mean, uh, council discussion.
Yes, uh, I do have council discussion.
Go ahead.
Many of you were not here back in two thousand seventeen, when the council rules were changed. We have council rules that have been going throughout the years. Councilwoman King was very instrumental in drafting some of our council rules many few years ago, but back two thousand seventeen, when this issue first came about, many of you were not here, hadn't thought about the council, and we fought hard. I'm just gonna tell you, we fought hard going from zero minutes, now from two minutes, it was initially two minutes, then we went to zero minutes where everyone talked sporadically, then we went to four minutes. Okay? She's not here, Ms. Kell was here, we, we, Faith was here. We fought hard to get these four minutes, and the four minutes have been taken totally out of content. Now, I'm gonna read to you from the open meeting laws. I hear somebody, uh, but I'm gonna read to you where we came up with the four minutes initially, from the open meeting laws. It is essential to the maintenance of a democratic society that public business be performed in an open and public manner, and that the citizens be advised of and aware of performances of public officials and deliberations and decisions that go into the making of public policy. For this end, the provisions of this chapter shall be construed liberally. And with that being said, it is very important that public opinions is heard, especially in the area of public business. And what I mean by public business, in the area of our ordinances, in the area of our resolutions, your voices has to be heard. It's a revised statute, it's a law. And with that being said, I did, I did mention to, uh, to President, to Vice President Urban, to amend the resolutions to reflect, well, I would say two, to two and two point five of minutes, but with general consensus that I've heard tonight, uh, three minutes, I recommend three minutes for the business section and for public participation, two minutes. But as the, as the, as, this is just my recommendation, but as the law said, according to the open meeting laws, your voices has to be heard. This will allow citizens to express opinions once again to ordinances and or resolutions within the city of Buckalosa. Now, this, that's just my general consensus. Thank you, Vice President Urban.
All right, question about this, uh, far as the business part, section of it, and that, uh, far as the business section of the council meeting, which is an introduction and adoptions of the ordinances, this is the business section.
Yes.
Because they constantly are calling our meetings, town hall meetings, and they're getting out of control, and we're getting in the news and all that, so that's, these are the complaints that we're getting. So they, actually, there's really no other city that does, does this to where we, we do it. So the question is, you're going to want to amend this after we get through voting on it, or what, what would you like to do?
Yes, uh.
We would first have to adopt it, and then turn around and amend it for the business, for the business section of it.
Well, well, you know, uh.
What?
Uh. Okay, you know, uh, doing, and I hate to stray off to, to, uh, to the, uh, to the budget, but from what I understand, from one of the, from one of the, uh, attorneys with the legislative auditors, we're to amend it first, amend the agenda or orders first, then we vote on it. You know?
So you want to go ahead and amend this right now?
I, I would suggest to, I mean, I, I made the motion to, I'm not, I'm not sure now anyone else is gonna vote on it.
I thought we had, I thought we had adopted first. We had to, yeah, we had to.
Not for the, and I can show you, I'll be able to show, I mean, I, I can show you the information from one of the senior attorneys from legislative auditors to amend it and then adopt it, but, I mean, that's just me, and I can show you that after, but I'm not gonna go back.
Okay, so what we, so we're talking about amending it now?
No, we're, we're still talking about, um, any of the council discussion.
Oh, any of your council, there's no council discussion right now?
Yes. Continue.
All right, continuing the council discussion. The business section of the agenda is why we're here, to begin with, I want to clarify that.
Absolutely.
When I say, and Councilman Kellis or whatever president or vice president say, when the business section of a meeting is, is over, that means it's over, uh, whatever y'all discuss and come up here and, and they, and I'm, I'm being honest in front of God, because y'all heard, you've heard him tell you this, call it a town hall discussion, and it goes on for, we've been out here at nine o'clock at night. So to bring this under control, and we're, that was the whole goal of this, was to bring it under control, and I, and there was four phone calls I got, and then I asked the Assistant Attorney General when we was at the MAX meeting, I asked her about that, and she says, anything between two and three minutes is within reason. She says to discuss business items. It was never a discussion about anything past that, but that was the, all was discussed. All right, uh, any other council discussion?
Yes, we are here for business, and everyone who stood at the podium and voiced their opinion, yes, it is all true. We are here to serve y'all, y'all voted us in to make sure that we're doing the job that y'all have appointed us to by electing us by our vote. However, except for Mr. Austin, everyone that got up here and spoke, spoke less than two minutes, okay? And most of that because y'all were trying to get your point across without talking down on the council. The two minutes, I would say is reasonable enough for you to get your point across. However, if you feel that you would like to talk six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twenty minutes, we have policies in place, where all you have to do is contact our secretary, Ms. Brezda, and she will add you to the agenda. and she will add you to the agenda. So we are following policies. And far as more, yes, we did get that information from the legislative auditors, but we also follow, follow a charter. And we're also grumpy. Most people that come here and come to the podium are grumpy. I said, as Councilwoman for district do, when we went to four minutes, it wasn't a problem, but now it's more chaos than us sitting here conducting business. This is a business meeting. We wanna hear your concerns. We wanna hear everything that y'all need to say. Sometimes it's constructive criticism. We take it, we grow from it, we learn. We have several people that don't even come to the meetings, but they do contact their council people throughout the week to let us know what's going on, what, what business we need to be handling, what orders need to be filled, not just coming to get on TV, not just coming to bash the council, not just coming to say hooray a whole science. This is a business. It's not a town hall meeting. One has not been called. And when it is called, I would like for everybody to show up, pack whatever facility it may be held at. But we have to remember, this is a business. And everyone that got up and spoke, y'all did well. Y'all concerns were heard, and you did it within two minutes.
And I think y'all four on the clock.
So leave me that for a minute.
Any other council discussion, or council discussion?
I did wanna say, I, I agree with this case about three minutes for the business part of the meeting. I think two minutes for the public participation is appropriate, but I think if someone's up here talking seriously, maybe have a question or two, who may wanna elaborate, I think that's appropriate to, to give three minutes for the business part.
For agenda. Alright. Now, we're gonna go to a vote. I'll wait a second, huh? Anyone else? Alright, this time I call a roll call. We're gonna vote on each agenda first. Is that what we're gonna get? Is that what we're gonna vote?
Yeah.
How about we make a vote, we don't know how. So we're gonna, you're not?
Canadian citizens.
But we have to vote on one. Oh, the, the, uh, not that one. Don't we bring that this? Probably especially some of those two. We need a second. Alright, so we're going now. We're now going to amend the agenda for three minutes for agenda items, that means business items that has to be in the city of Buffalo. And then two minutes for public participation. So roll call at this time.
Councilman Kate? Councilwoman Lowry? Councilwoman Templeton?
Aye.
Vice President Durbin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Now we gotta have a first and a second on this. Okay. Alright, so what we're doing then now, basically, we're, we're doing a resolution to, um, to amend, to amend the, the, uh, adopting of the rules and procedures for Buffalo City Council and reviving public participation, uh, as follows. Three minutes for agenda items, that means business items that's on the agenda, and two minutes for public participation.
And that's what they're saying.
Alright, we now need a-
They prefer to have four minutes with participation. That's what they're saying. But it's too much.
We now go ask for a motion?
I'm gonna accept it, amend the resolution.
Right.
Say it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Now, public participation on this. To recap, we're amending it for three minutes for agenda items, that means business of the city, and two minutes for public participation. Please come to state your name. Once again, I start the clock after you state your name and address for the record, so you know how to work business.
Keith Miller, round twenty-five, this portion of the vote, seven of Buffalo, Louisiana. Okay, how about for the business portion, two minutes and for, for the public participa- participation, three? Let's do it like that. Because y'all know this, this, this up here, most people don't speak on this. Y'all, y'all trying to be slick. Y'all trying to throw some slick sided stuff on us. But people on election day, when the election try coming around, don't be slick sided, never on their face that you're not gonna support them. You play all stupid, we gonna, y'all gonna be the joke on election day. Because y'all need to get your mind right. And stop trying to play all stupid and stop trying to play these dumb games. And do right. Give people three minutes and, and for the upper portion of this so-called business, do two. You don't wanna hear these. So if they don't wanna hear us, don't hear them on election day. Have a blessed day, if you can.
Richard, course, seventy-seven sixty-four, Marshall Richardson, right?
Yep, I think y'all are pulling a fast one. Mark, I told you to table that before, I wanna see the paperwork from the general that this is going through. I asked for it, Mark, and I told you next time we have the council meeting, to have that paperwork. You better table this tonight, ladies. Fall in it. Let me tell you what, and Mark, you said something about the public that wasn't very nice tonight, and I have you on tape. You said that it's getting out of hand. Everything is getting bad with the public. Let me tell you what. I see what's getting bad. It's Gloria Kate's running her mouth to the mayor when he's trying to speak. It was Penny Spears running out the door running her mouth.
We're not gonna call any council member names out. We're not gonna put a direct rail there.
They need to be called out.
You do it.
They need to be called out. They need to be called out. That ass, don't vote. Because you say you don't vote, don't vote here, brother. But that ain't gonna work.
Alright, before we, um, Phil, you have four minutes. Please state your-
I have anything?
You have four minutes. Please state your name and address.
I got four minutes? I'm only got four minutes on the next time, right?
Well, depends on what, what we discuss. So, you got four minutes to state your name. State your name and address for the record, and I'll start your four minutes.
Thanks, Phil. Nineteen thirty-one D B.
Thank you.
What I see here, that you all are not trying to work with the citizens. You all are not trying to work with the citizens. You're all trying to act bad with the citizens. But guess what? Don't bring that up here on me. Because I'm not gonna call away. And number one, you all are not respecting this citizen. Y'all think that the citizens not respecting you all. You all not respecting us. Public, public participation should at least be three minutes. Nothing less. If y'all can't give us that, I think we should start recalling you all right away. I really do. Because right is right. Like I told you all, we fought and lost lives to get freedom of speech. I'm one of them that fought to get freedom of speech. I'm not, I'm not coming here to let you take away from me. I'm not coming here to let you take away from me. And I mean that. So y'all must get right and deal with the citizens right. Because those, like I said, is certified, you're behind that. And here tonight, you all trying to take us further back. And this time, I put it that way. If y'all can sit up here and run, y'all about to talk about nothing but over four minutes, and we can't talk three minutes? Some wrong in that picture. So, okay, I tell the citizens, let's do a recall and forget about these people we got in here representing this city.
Please state your name and address for the record, and four minutes, please, or I can state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Melissa Lindsay. My address is fifteen oh eight Sunset. Um, I'm just leaving a text. And, uh, I am absolutely amazed, um, of the spirit of this town. Um, and in some ways also absolutely disgusted by this town. Um, I'm shaking, um, because I understand civil discord, and I also understand the rights of every single citizen in the United States of America. We are all equal. I'm shocked and I'm shocked by the way I have seen people in this town on this table behave. I'm very political. I come from Utah. Very political state, very right leaning. Right? And amazed that these citizens are being treated the way that you guys have treated them. Shocked. And you know what? I will. I will help, whatever I have to do. I can't even bring my grandkids to visit here because I am disgusted with the killings on the streets. It is not even safe for my grandkids to come to this town to visit with me. And that is something that you ought to all hang your heads low. Very low. I have grandkids here that have went to school all year. Right? That have lived here all year, that are new to me. And the school has been inirreprehensible. And the school boards, I don't even know if you have any. But we're looking to find out.
Do you have anything on this agenda about the three, about the three minutes?
You know what? It's disgusting. It's absolutely disgusting, and I feel sorry, but you know what? Things will change because you know what? This town deserves change. They deserve it. And you know what? I'm gonna help, do everything I can to help these people understand their rights. All of us. We all need to understand, read our constitution, because I've been in many civil camp, lots of city council meetings. So I have just seen Buffalo, I know how meetings are supposed to be answered. So hoodwink is not the word that's gonna happen today. We will not get hoodwinked. Thank you.
Ms. Lando, you have four minutes. Please state your-
General DeFauls, four fourteen, Mississippi Avenue. I think that you almost understand the point of public participation. That's before we were made to start it, us as a nation, was our lack of representation and our right to address our leaders. Representation without tax, taxation without representation is all about exactly what we're talking about. This is a fundamental, basic right of us as U.S. citizens to address the people we elect. It's that simple. It's not complicated, Mark. It's not about doing business. It's not about any of that. It's about my right as a citizen to address you in public with reason. Period. That is our right. It's a fundamental constitutional right. It's not something that you get to pick and choose. It's written into the constitution. And you're acting like you're doing us a favor. You're not doing us a favor. We have the right to address any public body that we elect that's representing us. That is our fundamental constitutional right. Don't lecture me about it being a business. Don't lecture me about being out of control. Okay? You can deal with that. You know how to deal with that. We have a constitutional right to address these. Don't act like you're doing us favors. Thank you.
Lando, eight, eight two six east seventh street, Buffalo City, D C M. Um, just like I just got up here before, um, I am asking you guys for the board that's getting up here and we're talking about business, talking about how to move our city. Please allow us the four minutes. Now, the foolishness, I'm not interfering with that because I've, uh, been holding this, and I think that it needs to come to heat. I have one question. I'm gonna try, Mr. Keith, may I understand what you're saying? But when you learn better about things, you do better. And my wife, um, now, we don't need to be up here fussing at each other. We need to try to get the city together. Y'all are sitting, following. We got to bring it back up. Now, now. Keith, am I right or wrong? When we spoke on the phone, you talked to these council members. Am I right or wrong?
You're talking.
You talked to these council members. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, well, I'm trying to-
But this is my thing. This is my thing. Don't, don't do, don't do. And I think everybody need to know here. We got some purpose in you. I get up here with hurts, man. I'm starting to get off the subject. Just give us one minute. I get up here, I have fought against y'all for what I thought as a citizens for right. And to find out, we have a lot in here fighting this fight. I can't go with that. What you see is what you get from me. And what we need to do is act together. Keith, let me tell you something. I, I, don't do that. You talked to these people. I'm telling you, the council members, I'm sorry. Don't get up here and say this person and that person didn't get up after this. Oh! Because, because, let me tell you this. Please let me tell you this. Because, let me tell you. Because, because you get in that field with all of your foolishness. I'm sorry. Let me take that one more. No, this is what, no, I'm not. Let me tell you, I stand for the right.
And I will be soon as you are served.
I said, what is you mean? You remind me of the Bible in here. And I'm tired. This city need to get together. This city need to get together. I'm speaking for everybody to come together. Y'all are so loud, look. That's because I'm upset, I'm hurt, and I found out all the blame.
Keith, 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 I'm asking for the last time. Keith Miller, I'm asking for the last time. Please come back.
And Keith, I'm asking you not to say my name. Councilwoman Douglas is asking me share the speaker truth. It has nothing to do with me.
Alright, Ms. Lando, you may proceed. Please address it. How does it got meant, whatever?
I'm just asking, um, for us to come and unite. I'm asking for us to all get along. Because it's not like the council members. It's not about the people's and the- See, it's our seed, this father. And I'm sorry if I got loud. I apologize to everyone who does up here, but I'm sorry. But I just can't, because everybody that know you, they know what I stand for. And the truth, and y'all, it's just time for us to get it together. If we keep fighting, we don't lose our seed. Right. But I just want everybody to be real, not fake toward each other. Come together, let's show them, let's show some love. I just can't. My heart is not gonna let me just sit up here and, and, and do that. You know what I'm saying? So, let's just come together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Austin, you have four minutes. I can state your name and address for the record.
More than half, seven thirty-six, Florida, seven forty-three, uh,
Uh, Mr. President, first of all, I let you sit, Mr. Cloud, gave y'all a list in this city. I found out, and we repeat it. And this is the thing, to take a place here, you really put the city in jeopardy. We do have a freedom of speech. And I don't know if y'all are aware that when you try to, or tell, to use our law enforcement to control the agenda, if you're pushing, you push them into a liability for the city and individuals. The part we have a right to get redress from our government. We mentioned it. When you're talking about the business sector of the media, you're talking about our tax dollars. And the time that we are wasting here and us not having a budget plan. I was, the municipality can't do their job. Our city is suffering. And the people are trying to carry that. And by getting down there, boy, it's not helping our city. And these personal effects, I'm gonna tell you something. When you drop off and you're elected, you're no longer that proud person. You're a public person. Man, if you're scared, strained, you're in the wrong. I remember eight years and before me, my predecessor, our president, was on the front of the Emerson death at the day of his death, waiting for a bad story to happen. So, they could make us personally look bad, not thinking about our memory. So, I know how it is then for the people. We have to be careful how we maintain ourselves. Because we don't, not, no longer represent ourselves in the business. We represent the people that are elected.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. We're gonna move to the, uh, council discussion at this time. And this will be the final vote because, um, as Mr. Mr. Austin did say, we got some, we got a lot of business items we need to take a look at also.
I do have a council discussion and I'll say it again. Um, I don't want anyone that came to the podium to think that I, as your councilwoman at large, don't wanna hear any of your concerns. Be it good, bad, or whatever you may want to say. All I'm saying is, we're here for business. And I do think public participation, if y'all have anything to say, once again, constructive criticism is always good for the ear because you learn from it, you grow from it. So, please don't take my words out of context. What I am saying is, we do not, we, as in the council and everyone else that may feel the way what I'm about to say is a statement. We don't care about the chaos of name-calling, bashing, the good old boy system, the great system. I'm forty-two years old. I wasn't raised with no good old boy system, don't know nothing about the good old boy system. I learned about slavery through reading. I didn't have, thank the Lord, I did not have to experience it. It is two thousand and twenty-four. Technology is taking over. We're here building bridges, hopefully for our youth. And some of the people that get up to the podium and speak is old enough to be my mother and father. Some of the things that come out of y'all mouth is totally disrespectful. I'm gonna respect you and I ask that you respect me. And it's okay. I'm not perfect. I make mistakes every day. I learn something new every day. And with all decency and respect, I do wanna hear what you have to say. Y'all voted us in so that we can hear from y'all and so that y'all can hear from us. So, please don't take Tamira Smith's words out of context. I wanna hear everything you have to say, no matter if it takes, once again, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty minutes. Cause I'm here on time. Y'all pay taxes, I pay taxes. Yes, we get paid to be here. Most of us have jobs. Not just jobs we go apply and McDonald's. I mean, we have worked hard, went to school, educated ourselves to have these jobs. So, don't take that out of context neither. Yes, we are here.
Take it out of context.
Context, thank you. We are here to listen to y'all and we wanna hear everything that y'all have to say. I'm sorry, ma'am Busher, Lord Busher. Missy Beck, Missy Beck, hey, she moved into the city. She been rocking and rolling. Everything she say, we may not agree with it, but she's trying to get her corner crossed to come together, to unify. We're not perfect. She's not perfect. She wanna do everything in decent in order. But sometimes, we may have to go over four minutes for public participation. As long as I've been sitting here, I know if, if he's not here, Mr. Faith, I'ma call and check on him. If Mr. Joel's not here, I'ma call and check on him because when I got elected in two thousand and fifteen, other than Miss Keller, Mr. Futz, Morgan, Keith, Chester, Mrs., um, Mrs. Fa- uh, Lord Faith's wife, Mrs. Fowler. These people been here. I mean, from day one, they don't listen to me. So, when I say you getting up to put on for attention and all that, that's what I mean. Y'all can call us through the week. Y'all have all our numbers. And if you missed a memo, then make sure everybody had. And once again, my number is nine eight five, five seven zero, seven one four five. If I don't call you back in a time of matter, please text. I don't have all the answers, but I will try to research. Now, all this foolishness, that's getting old. We have a minister sitting here at this table. I'm quite sure he don't wanna hear all this. This is a man called by God to come to deliver messages to the citizens. I don't think he wanna waste his time getting bashed. Then y'all get up and call us some of the uneducated people y'all ever met. Well, half of us here, if y'all didn't know that when y'all was voting us in, like Mr. Austin say, we put our business out there. We are educated, but we're human. We are human. We're here to work for y'all and we want y'all to work with us. If I disrespected anybody in any type of way, form, or fashion, I sincerely apologize. I don't want you to think that you can't get up and tell me or ask me anything, cause if I don't know something, I'm trying to call you and say, hey, I found the answer to that. But, like I say, it's getting older. We, we gotta respect each other more. This city is snowballing. And I don't mean snowballing in the right direction. I mean the wrong direction. Y'all, y'all can breathe. Y'all, y'all not crazy. Y'all not young deaf ears. Mr. Austin, you done sit up here. You think this city will get rated an A right about now? No! You know some things we don't know. Work with us, help us. We need help. We're human. But we don't wanna come up here every meeting, how I know? Because we can't all meet and talk it one time. Some of y'all think we do. It's sunshine laws. Some of y'all may never heard of. We don't play and meet behind a meet, meet behind a scene. We all have families. We all working. We trying to do what's right. We all have to respect each other. We not up here trying to disrespect y'all and cut off y'all tag. But we don't wanna hear the foolishness. Call us through the week if you wanna talk crap. Cause that's what I call it. I'm the youngest person, other than Pastor Reena, sitting up here. I was raised that way. And some of y'all always have to be my family. Thank y'all. Sorry for taking up too much time, but really and truthfully, I apologize to anyone I may have offended. Please forgive me. I don't mean it that way. I don't wanna take y'all minutes. All I was saying, y'all got up and spoke within two minutes. I'm fine with that. We here working this little business. And public participation, if you feel you need to talk longer, get with Miss Brenda. She'll put you on there. Anybody knows that know me, I'm all with. I'll give you the shirt off my back. I don't have much. I work for everything that I have, but I try to respect each and every one of everybody. And out of the mouth of a baby, you can learn a lot. I'm very mindful of that. Thank you.
Any other, I mean, any other council discussion?
I just wanna remind everyone, it's not the end of the world. Uh, just as, you know, President's resolution tonight, we can easily come back next one and increase it. Uh, we just wanna do what we can to keep meetings under control. It's a lot of disrespectful things that's been said, even while councilmen are speaking. Uh, people are making all types of comments, but we're doing our best to try to bring the meeting under control. If we can get the meeting under control, get, get this meeting stable, hey, we can increase later on. But right now, it's not the end of the world. You got three minutes to discuss all these business items. When I was on the council, it was two minutes. Uh, and then, uh, some point went to three minutes. So, I've seen it done. I've seen people get up there and say what they need to say. But also I've seen so many people get up there to show out and to make a scene and to wanna be seen by people. Don't say nothing to people throughout the week. All you people that office, they got phone numbers, call them. Y'all don't wanna come up here and blindside people and try to embarrass them and show people up. And that's not productive business tactics, man. And, and, and so we're just trying to get the meetings under control. We can get them under control. Who knows? Maybe next tomorrow, maybe tonight, we can increase it back to three or four minutes. Right now, we're trying to get the meetings under control. It's six thirty. And we've been meeting over an hour, talking about meetings. And that's no, we can get it under control.
My only additional comment. I never see so much hatred. This part hatred. We, we don't need that. We don't, we have a lot going on in this city. We have this mayor in place. I know he's trying to do what we do. We are a checks and balance for the mayor. I know some people have heard him say it. Mr. Austin, you've said it. The council is a checks and balance. We gotta, we have to get this hatred under control. We really do. For the town, this, this city, this little city, many people call me, come here. I'm not a Muslim, I'm here. But my heart is here. I work hard. Yes, you have a right to recall. Do you recall? Do what you gotta do. But I'm still gonna work for the people. Some of you might be saying to me, but I, I never, uh-uh. I, hey, I am a civil rights EEO officer. That's part of my background. My graduate degree, I'm an MBA, Masters of Business Administration. Sociological and Criminal Justice Maker, double A. And I use every, I could be using my talents somewhere. I'm retired for two jobs. Federal. I'm, I'm not gonna go on with my, with my, with my God's say. But, you know, I'm not perfect, but I try to live what God wants me to do. I try to do my best to lead the Lord. And most of you in here, you know, I'm not trying to get into, to the religion. I hear, I heard of, of a, another municipality was saying, stop the, stop the, uh, the God and state type of, uh, of, uh, the God and state laws. But we, we gotta stop, we gotta stop this, this, this is. And I think it's affecting all of us, all the council people here. It's affecting us, like it's affecting me. That, that spirit, those, those spirits, they can jump off of one another. Believe it. Believe it. And I always thought that Bubba Lusso was a thriving town. You know, just reading from the history. And it can be a thriving ti- town again, but we, we got a lot, as Ms. Wendy mentioned. It's a lot. It's a lot that we have to do here in this city. You know? And I know Mr. Mr., uh, Cassette, you know, I heard the hatred for you. I, I heard that, you know? And you don't know that I apologized to him then. He's apologized to me for some things that he didn't say. He's not here. He's not here. But we trying, we're trying to work this thing out so we can get this town together. Cause, you know, as, as, uh, councilman O'Ree said, we, we gotta get things under control. People are watching us all over the nation. All over the nation. And we, we can do it. We, we can do it. We can do it. I always say to my councilmates, we can do this. We can continue for our citizens, build for our citizens, and do what's right for our citizens. And that's all what we're typically trying to do today. That's it. Where I am. I'm definitely not trying to take away anybody's freedom of speech. No way. I work at, at the presidential level. You know? As I said last week, when it was initially mentioned at our last meeting, we can revisit this. I, I think two minutes was mentioned then. I said then, we gonna revisit it. We visit, we be visiting now. And like Pastor O'Ree said, Councilor O'Ree said, we can revisit again. And I think we will. I, I think we will. And I think we will. This stuff hate, this, please, please, y'all, this stuff hate, please, 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 I beg. And we gonna be self-analysing. And I gotta put down a X. I mean that. We gonna be self-analysing. And we get this up. I can't be harder. Uh-uh. Do you wanna be part of it? Continue it on? And on and on and on and on and on. Let's stop people, please. Let's stop.
Okay. I do my best to get along with any, any of y'all. I sit here in my seat, uh, I sit here in my seat, and I report. I try to handle anything that I feel that I can. If I can't handle it, I'm turning it over to the next person to let it go. Michelle, I accept your apology. Because I asked you to continue because I wanted to hear what you had to say. So, I don't hate you no more. I'm not trying to take nobody's hat. But you come here and give your task. Yes, I see it. You come here and give your task. You want us to work with you, but you don't wanna work with us. You work with me, I work with you. You respect me, I respect you. And like Mr. O'Ree said, we done been here a hour and fifteen minutes and we don't even say that.
Moving on, okay? All right, we're gonna close off, uh, uh, council discussion. Um, anyway, this time, we'll have a little conversation.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Aubrey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Vice President Urban?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
All right. We got our next item, introduction of ordinances. Tomorrow. Stand your back up just a second.
Good afternoon. Everyone.
Oh, she's on her list.
No, it is.
Oh, I apologize.
And I apologize too. And I did send seven one seven, saying, "You're a place," and I'm also in the city, I think you all know that. And we had planned to do this during the mayor's remarks. Of course, everybody knows he's out of town. And everybody knows he's out of town, it's a special business. And we also had hoped to get a, make a special announcement, but he's gonna do that when he gets back. Real good news for the city, Bogalusa. I would like to first give, express my deep respect and humility for our council. And I know that this is a hard job. I was taught that when you have guests in your home, you act differently. And we have four guests here, right? We have four guests here tonight, and they were invited because the mayor-
We're just gonna have point of order just for a second. This is considered a recognition award, is what this is. We're backing up just for a second.
Just for a second. All of you know that this Monday is Memorial Day. And we have our special guest here, and I ask him to stand there, not to say anything.
You want him to stand here?
Yeah, just stand.
Okay, come up.
Come up, please. First, I would start with the guest. I would introduce that I am a veteran and I'm also the site coordinator for Reach Across America. Most importantly, Kevin. Kevin is the assistant site coordinator. And just to make a big reaffirmation, because many of the representatives of Reach Across America are older, and we were told we had to get a site coordinator in case, you know, somebody passed away. So I want to introduce again Mr. Donnie Kim, who's with the American League, and his colleague, and his colleague, Charlie Lloyd. And we have another guest that came all the way from Covington, Mr. Michael Henry. He is the commander for-
The other four, seven, two, eight, six, five, four.
And again, I want you guys to know, I apologize that we had worked along and getting here. But this is so important to me. Kevin and I have been doing Reach Across America for fourteen years in the city of Bogalusa. And we're very proud of that. And I would like to give a special recognition of certificates that were gonna be presented by the mayor tonight. But again, he's out of town. But we wanted to go on and do this because, again, the Memorial Day is Monday, and we want to have this done, and we want to make the announcement real quick.
I'm Donald Councilor, the chairman of American League of Police twenty-four here in Bogalusa. Monday, we will have a Memorial Day program starting at eleven o'clock at the VA Cemetery. Everyone is advised, we hope you come out, we support our president a hundred percent. Then after the ceremony, we'll go to the American League and have a luncheon. Hopefully, I will bear good news. We support the city of Bogalusa, our parish, the state, of course, our country. The American League is a hundred, will be a hundred and five years old this year. And it's the largest, best organized organization in the world. We are here to support our veterans, and of course, our members are proud of you, and proud of that. And we have been working on this station for fourteen years. I hope on this Reach Across America, it's a fantastic program. Hope you continue to support it. And support our American League, that big beautiful flag, the MEB, American League of Police. Come on in. We've got a lot of fans, just ask around, and we do advertise a lot. We've got Bing over the door tonight, Donald Jackpot, right now.
Thank you. Just my last comment, I'd like to represent the room, raise your hand when I give a different raise of hand. Just the last thing, a brief will be placed to honor an American hero at one of Bogalusa, four thousand participating locations this year at National Reach Across American Day in December. So we thank you very much.
And before we go, all the veterans in the room, thank you for your service. And it's great, we appreciate it. Thank you to the ones who have given their lives for our country. All right. We're moving on over to the, at this time, introduction of ordinances. Councilwoman Kate?
Introduction of ordinances. An ordinance setting Appalachian tax rates, and they'll believe such taxes for 2024. Now, this Appalachian tax, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-two, what to ask, was introduced April sixteenth by President Kellis. And on this date, we had our Bogalusa bond attorney, David Wolf, was present. You can go back and review the video from Mount Huron News. But he was our guest speaker in introducing this tax rate. And on May seventh, there was a public hearing was held for this vote to be voted upon. But due to a discrepancy in non-advertising to the public in our public journal, it's been advised that you restart this process because of the publishing, the non-publishing, shall I say, in our journal. So this is not a different tax. It's still the same tax. And we will discuss this further at our next council meeting. But this is not a different tax, it was due to the public journal.
Okay. Also, we have another ordinance by Councilwoman Kate.
Okay. This is an emergency ordinance to add minus the mayor to enter into a contract to complete our replacement rotating assembly model number oh-eight fourteen S forty for a quote. This is Station Three, pump three. Pump two that has gone out. And we also have, well, the next one would be pump two. But this is, this is an emergency, because as you know, we've had problems with our pumps throughout the city. Our last financial meeting on last Friday, we talked about it a bit, and we discussed the fact of finding the funds for this particular station with the two pumps. So we did it with Mr. Bailey, our controller on it. I had mentioned funds out of one account that we may possibly have. And is Mr. Patterson? Is he, did he leave?
I'm right here.
Okay, Mr. Patterson, you would speak on pump, Station Three pump.
Well, Station Three, if y'all noticed, we've got a contractor over there. Got the road Anthony Forensa closed off. Station Three is one of our major list stations out of sixty-three in Bogalusa. If you, just to paint your picture real quick, that one, knowing it was a horsepower, we got sixty-three stations, these ones got two, some have three. You got a bottom-up pumping station, that's the one over by Milltown, that's fourteen. If you notice right now, it's got a pump on it, we've had it around. Station fourteen is the pumping station, and then you got Station Three by Anthony Forensa. So if you picture them, bottom-up pumping stations, each one of them have three gigantic pumps. All the other sixty-one stations all around Bogalusa, and they have a small pump. And they call them list stations because they hit lift and expedite all our sewers through forty-four, twenty-four inch mains. And they get to three and fourteen, and they line up to the treatment plant so we can treat sewers and get it away from the public. And eventually, it's, you know, it's treated. But the problem is translocated, and then we've had to call an emergency ordinance so we can get these pumps and expedite them. They're very expensive pumps. We've asked for two, three right now. We actually will wind up needing one more, they're twenty-two thousand dollars apiece. And then fourteens are similar, they're a little bigger, but, you know, everything costs if you need it. So this is what this is about, and we deal about it.
Thank you, thank you. The second ordinance, and it'd be, the second ordinance would be, oh, one question, Mr. Patterson. When do you expect the pumps to arrive?
Well, we, there's, we should, as soon as the city council passes it, we should have in a few days, we have a contractor there, and these questions have to be given there while he's there so he can repair the Station Three. He's redoing the piping in the back, because we had a twenty-four inch frame broke. A board from DQ, it's just been all at once, never taken at once. So we're not gonna waste Station Three, because Station Three's like here again. Like, so we need pumps, and we need to get them coming. As soon as, hopefully, y'all pass this, we'll have them coming tomorrow.
Thank you. The second, the second ordinance-
Wait a second, we got, actually, we got voting on it, it's emergency ordinance.
Okay, well, with that being said, I made a motion that we-
We have a motion as second, to recap so everybody understands, very important part, that we need to get our list station number three back up to Anthony Forensa. This is voting on pump three of two. Okay?
Station three pump.
We open it up, the floor now, the public discussion, if you have questions about this emergency ordinance. It's a very vital part of the sewer, sewer system affects everybody in the city of Bogalusa. All right, they be none, I'll move to council discussion.
Make a motion too.
Okay? Second?
Yeah, we're all.
Okay, yeah, we are. I have any, that's it, I'm real call.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Ree?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Vice President Urban?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
I got emergency ordinance also by Councilwoman Kate's. This is the pump three of three.
Station three.
Station three pump three.
An ordinance authorized the mayor to enter a contract to repair, oh, sorry. An emergency ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter a contract to complete our replacement rotating assembly model. And we got the model FMI oh-eight fourteen S forty, quote, Station Four pump, for Station Three pump three.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
A simple.
Do you have a second? Okay, I motion second. Any public discussion on Station Three pump three?
And this is second price, point two thousand dollars.
They be none, I'm now move to council discussion. They be no council discussion, roll call please.
Councilwoman-
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Ree? Councilwoman Temple? Vice President Urban?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
And thank you, council, for this very important part.
Thank y'all.
Yes, thank you very much. Next, we have-
President Urban, before you go forward, I just want, we're gonna be dealing with this on Station fourteen also in the coming days. Because, you know, remember I said, fourteen, Popper Bear for three, and Momma Bear. We get Momma Bear fixed, we get Popper Bear. We'll be addressing that in the next several days. Those are our two mains, that we gotta go on.
Is that, is that the one in Popper's corner?
No, that's-
On that list?
No. North side and Popper's quarters, all that goes through Station Three.
No, I'm talking, I'm sorry, not that, I'm talking about fourteen.
No, fourteen, fourteen services. If you head towards Milltown and go that direction, it services those neighborhoods. And Station Three services other direction. Popper's Quarters has that thirty horsepower pump that works, lifts the sewer from Popper's Quarters to Station Three. Remember, it's all, what we can't get gravity fed, we have to have a lift station. And that's why it's called a lift station. Lifts it up to grade where it flows to the main, eventually, all, all we end up with is a treatment plant.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yes, and Mr. Patterson, I know we talked a bit about it, you know, with finances, but could you give, maybe, if you are admitting a roundabout map for pump fourteen experience?
Those are similar to three, but I think on horsepower, you can just probably say, you're gonna be looking at about the same price of times three. Like I said, you just passed approved pump two and pump three. Pump one's run kind of with its leg hanging out. So they have pump one, two, and three. One pump runs clockwise, one pump's counter, and one's standby. So three's barely out of standby, and it's not enough. And then fourteen has no standby, no two or three. Right now, we're on a ready pump. That's, we need to just get these things to stop running these pumps.
Let's move on over back to the ordinance.
Oh. Okay, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract to repair a sewer pump at the Amanda Court Lift Station. Now, this was actually introduced, the emergency ordinance was introduced at our last meeting. And once we introduce an emergency ordinance, we have to come back and introduce the actual.
Correct, that one is already repaired, is one of the smaller stations.
Yes. And that was one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
See, if you see the small stations, a little, I call it baby stations, they have, their pumps are about seventeen hundred dollars, they own two. Then there's some stations a little bit bigger, depending on neighborhood. The pump go from seventeen hundred to three thousand, the four thousand to eight thousand, and then you get this two big from all the popper stations. And then you realize, Ben, it's a lot of stuff. Sewers is not cheap.
We'll be voting on that on June fourth meeting. So next, we move to public hearings and adoptions of ordinances. This is by Councilwoman Kate's.
Okay, an ordinance to amend, an ordinance number twenty-seven eighty-nine, authorized the mayor of the city of Bogalusa to enter into an amended lease agreement with the Washington Parish Council on age. Now, this particular ordinance, if you're going back and forth, we finally have it, whereas all lease seats are included in the lease, which will include the city of Bogalusa, Reverend Price, and Ms. Tack, that has three, two nonprofit organizations that will be at the Youth Field Building on Austin and Furby, across from, from Trax. And we're very glad to get this building, we're happy that Youth Field moved on to their building, but we're glad that this building is going to be occupied to help the citizens. And with that being said, I pass a motion that this particular ordinance is read and will accept as read.
I second.
We've got motion as second. Any public discussion, please come to the podium, say your name, that, that's for record.
I did invite Reverend Price and Ms. Tack to come.
Ms. McCloud?
Kevin McCloud for fourteen, fifty, I have this for-
Debbie McCloud, four fourteen Mississippi, I just wanted to, um, we heard you all vote for this, um, time and price. Do a whole lot for our city and, um, this will make it more accessible for anyone who really wants. Hope you guys will support it, it's a good thing.
Anyone ask in the public? There be none, I move to council discussion.
And in their absence, I just would like to commend the both of them, um, Ms. Ty goes above and beyond and so does Reverend Price. Um, anytime you call either one of these wonderful persons, they're always eager and willing to help. Um, Ms. Ty has, has, um, clothes that are housed people and saying for, um, past the price, so definitely, um, they do need the building so that they're able to, um, continue to help the citizens.
Okay. At this time, uh, uh, there be no further council discussion, my roll call.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilman O'Ree?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Vice President Urban?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Okay. That concludes our business session of the council meeting. Uh, we now move to public participation. The first name I have on here will be Ms. Gladys Lanten. Good afternoon, Ms. Lanten. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mrs. Gladys Lanten. My address is nineteen fifteen Los Hurley, here in Bogalusa. I would just wanna say, thank you all for getting on fixing part of the street. They came out, filled it up and did some work on it, said it had to be some nice construction going on under there because they were trying to do the best they could right then. And, um, one of my concern is that on the corner of Columbia and Sixth Street, right between the bank and, what's the name of the company there, where Washington Bank is?
Knowles.
Knowles. It's a hole about fifty. When you turn from Columbia Street onto Sixth Street right there, anybody carho in there, they are in trouble. They will have to have all kinds of car work done, so I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, it is deep, deep. Just as soon as you turn the curve off Columbia Street onto Sixth Street by, uh, the bank, between the bank and Knowles, it's a deep, deep hole there. And it, it, it needs to be, something needs to be done about that before, um, you know, it, it builds a big, you know what I mean? So that's all I'm saying, but I appreciate you guys, you ladies and gentlemen, for coming out when I did and addressed the whole, the construction that would be done at my house since, what, two thousand seventeen or something like that? But they have come out and did a little bit of repair and said it's gonna take a lot more. Construction, we're gonna have to tear up the homes, that whole area, but I appreciate them fixing that because it had become a bird, a bird bath. But I appreciate you all for coming out and doing that work, that's all I can say. Now you continue to be strong and work hard.
That's right.
That's all I can add, be true, work hard. Thank you.
And thank you, uh, public workers for addressing this Lanten's issue that's been going on for a while. Uh, next we have Ms., Ms. Debbie McCloud. Ms. McCloud? Please state your name and address for the record.
Debbie McCloud, four fourteen Mississippi, it's unfortunate that most of the councils come, but anyways, I want to know the status of the budget and why it was not brought up tonight, uh, since that's been a big concern and the council has talked about it consistently, but not people do that, so I'd like to know why. The other thing is, I, I, I don't dislike anybody on the council, despite what people may say, but I do feel like there's a hostility and a lack of transparency with the council. And I keep saying it, it's not an attack on any individual, I just keep wishing that you guys would talk about what the issues are. You know, instead of feeling like you have to hide from us and now all we hear is that you guys hate us, what I would like to hear is what, what you all think, what you're doing, what, why is, you know, reporting the budget, talk about stuff in council meeting, disagree. This is the first time I have heard a discussion with the council about an amendment or anything else in a very long time. And it leads to distrust, and I keep saying that, you can't, I mean, don't understand why you came to your other half of the issue, which is that if you approach us with hostility and distrust and think that we're going to attack you, then it raises the level, the level. You know, if you wanna tone it down and bring it down, then be open, be transparent, talk about your concerns. Talk about what you don't like with the mayor, talk about what you don't like with the budget, tell us what's going on. With, with the, we can't talk about it or you'd be surprised what we know, or reading things in the paper, reading things online, and not giving the truth when we come here, I come to find out. So then I'm not hearing this every place, I'm saying I'm coming here to hear what's going on and what I get is silence. And I'm just begging y'all to look at yourselves and start talking. You know, we're not, no, and we can work together, but not if you move up, if you treat us like we're going to devour you if you share any information. It just doesn't work.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. McCloud. Next we have Mr. Marvin Austin Singer. Mr. Marvin, uh, you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Marvin Austin, seven thirty-six, one hundred seventy, Bogalusa, where we at? I think it was, uh, the late Senator from New York, Ronald Kennedy, the late State Lieutenant. He said, "Some see things as they are and ask why." And he said, "Some see things as they're not and they ask why not." And what he was saying is, we can't get hung up on the way things go. We have to work to make things look better. And, uh, I was sitting there with a question about, uh, if one town in Bogalusa, our streets were looking like they look now. And then there was some movement, and we had our streets repaired, we had a overlay, we passed, uh, cactus for street overlay. And I would like to sit up again, I forgot who was it, uh, Councilwoman Smith, and I mentioned to her about legacy. And, uh, we have a very legacy when you sit behind that, that people can look back at. And try to build on the legacy. When one council leaves, another council takes over and try to advance. You know, I also, I have some young grandkids, I got my, uh, youngest is ten months old, and, uh, that's about one of my son of the year, he's always six, he has four. And I have some teenager, well, I got a little teenager present. And I like to see, I'm seven, six years old, I pray that I can maybe get a hundred and twenty. Well, I would like to see why they were out there, sitting, looking over, moving forward. Where you gonna have to do that, try to work together. The mayor is putting out the working accountants and the council is working together. Because you wanna leave, leave a legacy, you say that council and that mayor, it worked to make things look better. And I would, y'all people take over, they can look back and say, you know, our four parents, they were trying to do things to make our community a better and safer for them, they can work together.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Now, um, we next, we have, uh, Reverend Pete Merrill.
So Pete Merrill, nine twenty-five, East Fourth Street, seven, Bogalusa. I was taught that we're like, we should be like Christ. We're real wrong with this Christ, because he tells us about ourselves. Then when we're right, you know about this, uh, Pastor O'Ree, that same Christ that, that will put something on us will come and hurt us. Each and every one of you are, if you're right, I'm gonna say you're right, I don't care who don't like it. If you're wrong, I'm gonna tell you you're wrong, I don't care who don't like it. That's a hypocrite for me to say you're wrong and then when you're right, I don't say nothing. And what she was talking about, when it came up for this district B seat to be, uh, filled, and Tamira Moss, Miss, uh, Councilwoman Smith here, she was the only one that voted in, in favor of this mayor to lock. So I committed her own error. Now, if that's called being fake, then I'm fake. Why bash up when she's wrong, when I, when I feel like she's wrong, and when I feel like she's wrong is because I feel like she's wrong according to what Christ is and right, wrong, not my personal feelings. So why bash up when she's wrong, but don't say nothing when she's right? That mean I have a personal hatred and vendetta against her. And people talk about you need to, you need to come together, but they want you to bash people who they don't like and take them to support people who, who they do like. Now, if that's not phony, I don't know what phony is. My second thing, I would like to address, uh, we need some pine holes need to be filled on Florence Avenue and, uh, Fourth Street. Up there in the Fourth Street, uh, East Fourth, uh, Florence Avenue and East Fourth Street, pine holes need to be filled. Uh, we ask that you would please, uh, say about that, uh, for the people. And God bless you and may God keep it, I'm gonna tell you when you're right and I'm gonna support you. Uh, when you're wrong, I'm gonna tell you you're wrong and I'm gonna support you when you're right, and when you're wrong, I'm gonna help you get it right. God bless you all.
Next we have Ms. Summer Dickinson, um, where you just, yeah, all right, you done this, okay. Uh, Ms. Dever, uh, per se. She's not here anymore. Uh, Ms. Chasten Vicklin, you will have two minutes. Come to the microphone, say your name and address for the record, please.
Chasten Vicklin, eighteen twenty-three, Avenue H. I have a question. Is it true that our treatment plant is operating without a licensed operator?
Our treatment plant, we're currently, uh, Don Jones was a treatment plant manager, and he was in good was twenty-six years. Uh, he was ready, re- resignation and he retired. We had this contract for, um, for a boom up, uh, our registration, that contract. And he's gonna be thoroughly missed and missing, and he's taught me a lot. Right now, I'm just coordinating, trying to oversee, I'm coordinating with the DQ. Uh, I'm getting advice, we're being advised and, uh, we, uh, I got a list from the DQ and I'm, I'm coordinating with them daily, anything I don't know, they do. And so I've extended DQ officers that are working with me to keep us, hold our hand until we can get, um, uh, three, a grade one, level two, and three, uh, contract or permanent, uh, sewer treatment plant manager. And, uh, with that said, the first thing they sent me was a list of retired contractors, uh, retired treatment plant managers that will contract. And so I'm actually getting in touch with some of them and we're gonna see if we can get somebody, one of them in here. Until we get, uh, somewhere across the country, where we find someone that wants to come to Bogalusa and pay up permanent. Uh, but that's where we're at with that, but, uh, we're definitely in the process, but we, we, we like, we, we miss John Doe, that's, it is what it is, at some point somebody's gonna retire and, you know, he did. But that was my, always my fear, you know, what do we do, what do we do? So DQ advisors, it's, it does happen across the country and they work hand in hand closely with us, just like they, with station three, they've been working closely with the spill. Uh, I've had a good spill report and when I, some of the same ones, when I need advice, I call them.
So, so y'all are working on getting.
Yes, most definitely, yeah, that's, the most important thing I do is your co-work director is, uh, Department Health and, and Water and then, uh, DQ, you know, it's, it's sewer, that's the primary, because that's public safety. And, uh, we don't pay a lot, I promise you.
Okay. My second question is for Mr. Bailey. What happened to the two hundred thousand dollars that we scratched for the rundown house, pay up the fund, and why hasn't it been put back?
That's new history.
It happened on June twenty-second of twenty twenty-three. That's a restricted account.
I, I will be to.
Okay, I'll be waiting for your answer.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bailey, thank you. All right, next we have, um, Mr. Joe Miller. Uh, please come to the microphone, please, say your name and address for the record, Ms. Miller.
Can I take my twenty minutes? Just a moment, sorry. Till, uh, five thirty-two off the street. I was concerned about the street over there on, uh, Robinson Street, I believe in terrorists. First of all, I'm gonna say I heard just your statement, Ms. Kate, Ms. Tamira, and Reverend, uh, O'Ree. I'm taking heed to this, uh, that, this, I'm taking heed to all that, and I appreciate, you know, y'all so saying. Y'all work with us and we can work with y'all. And back to that street, uh, being out, the bridge down, is there's no barricades there.
Okay.
And, uh,
This is on Robertson.
Robertson, and terrorists.
Bridge on Robertson, we need some barricades there. Give me that again. Rob, Robertson, and a couple people.
She's talking to that.
That, that.
Robert.
Yeah, the bridge is out, and it's since that, been out since Katrina, and it needs some barricades on both sides, so some kind of barrier or something.
Yeah, okay, it's important, I would say the fix is because I noticed a while back, when I drove, it's a habit, you know, because of the new politics and the new ambulance, I would let you go on the street and get that, and bag out with all the bridges down. And, and that's taking a minute for any emergency situation, they have to handle, okay? So let's start, I'm gonna take your attention, and thank y'all so much, I mean, y'all come to the meeting, and I'm listening to you as well, though, and everything, uh, look, and I said, years ago, kind of been the same thing, but I learned, and I thank y'all for y'all patience with me. Thank you.
All right. Uh, we have the last public speaker here, uh, Mr. Faith Farrell. If you could comfortably state your name and address for the record, sir.
Faith Farrell, nineteen thirty-one, Hebrew Place. I like to say that, uh, we spent a lot of time on it, two minutes, time that we wasted. We shouldn't have been going with that. We should have been discussing getting this budget passed. I don't know why y'all just keep, you poke with your head, it don't make any sense. It's, it's saying that if you pass this budget, we could accomplish most of, prior to stuff for this city. So let's start thinking about positive stuff, thinking about this topic, but we, it's not important. Let's talk about positive stuff. I've been telling y'all to stop wasting time on foolishness and get to the stuff that we need to be doing for this city to bring it forward. So you, you all think about stuff that you shouldn't be thinking about, more than think about positive stuff that you should be thinking about. When are we gonna get on the right track? Like, get this city cleaned up, get these pumps fixed that, that you've been talking about. We got a lot of stuff that we did in this city that we not even concentrating on. The, the, the mayor and his team is concentrating on, but you constantly not with them. That's what we fuss, fussing about, we gonna try to get on the same track with them. Until you all get on the same track with them and get on the same track with the citizens, we gonna never come to Bogalusa. So let's get together and stop trying to lay all the blame on the citizens. It's not us. We just speak to make you all know that stuff we can take care of, that you are not paying attention to, that's all. And don't keep, continue to try to put the blame on us. You're like, Mr. O'Ree, you just got here, you were talking and trying to cut out, and I don't like that. Because you just put your plate in it, don't. And you just be talking like you done been here forever, it's not right. So let's, let's don't come in here trying to throw, throw, throw all the blame on us because you don't even know what's going on. So get on board and figure out what's going on before you try to blame us.
Thank you very much. Ms. Barbara, um, as you come to the microphone, please section. Ms. Barbara, um, as you come to the microphone, please say your name and address for the record, please.
Barbara Harris, sixteen oh one, Southern Drive, Bogalusa, Louisiana. I just wanna say thank you to my councilperson, Ms. Temples. We had a problem and I called, we can answer a call and got the job done. And also my sister's street, where they're the same native names, is Brad's family. And I'm looking forward to saying the best looking district in the council, with the Miss Temples. And I thank the council members for ending the meeting and the progress.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Alright, that concludes our public discussion for tonight. Uh, we're going to next move over to administrative remarks. Anybody from administration, listen up.
I just wanna say that, uh, we are in dire need of funds if, on this budget. There's, uh, we're down to one year of record. When we had twelve, it's just, it's not us. And as, as the director of orchestra, my instruments are few now. So, and I'm not, you know, jumping on y'all's opinion back over there. As, as the public works director, I need to have a smooth flow of operational funds. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that's all for administrative remarks and move on to council remarks. And we're gonna start with, uh, um, Councilman Orey.
I want to address the budget, concerning your asking question about the budget having been brought up. So council needs to feel comfortable with everything that's in the budget in order for us to be able to pass it. That's one thing in particular I spoke to him about. I spoke to Mr. Rissins last week. He assured me that if he would have it, it took me a time to matter. And so as soon as he get that to me, I would be comfortable. But it's still up for the body to be able to pass it. So I spoke to him on a few occasions, I said, Rissins last week, and he promised he'd get it to him. And when he get that to me, I'll be comfortable voting for the, the budget. Um, second thing, I want to thank Mr. Farrell for reminding me I just got here. Cause it feel like I've been here for twenty years in this little short time. Thank you for reminding me of that. Last thing I wanna say, uh, I want my little time to to be, I listen to you. These meetings should run smoothly. Again, we just respect each other. I'm gonna listen to y'all, y'all listening us, y'all little smart comments and all these objections, we grown. It's a meeting, it's a pleasant meeting, big as it is, I just want to conduct ourselves that way. I don't think y'all gonna attempt it without a hard front fingers and break the people. I don't think there's gonna attempt it no more, so I don't see the point of doing it. And to follow my last comment about this folks up. Thank the council for voting me, y'all did the right thing at the time. Because I served eight years, again. Y'all, uh, they tried to recall us for putting water machines in, that failed. And I was elected again to my district and I live in the district. So for its qualifications concern, that's no brainer. I'm just lying on brunt, she wrong, I may support, I may not, no. She's a great woman, but for its trust, goodness sake, I think that was no brainer, so. God bless y'all.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Orey, Councilwoman Douglas.
When I could say anything, I'd mention on the ask. Uh, I also want to say that, uh, students getting out, you know, for students out, the kids are out. We need to watch out for these kids because we have some parents that just send their kids out, you know, they have the summer food program. They send the kids, they will not take the kids. So we need to take, uh, watch out for, uh, the kids. Also, I'd like to commend the Bogalusa Police Department for stepping under the last man at Lieutenant Spikes' funeral. I do appreciate where they showed up and they really showed up. And this was at the last man. I do recommend them for being there. Uh, I would like to take and wish everyone a happy Memorial Day.
Thank you, Councilwoman Douglas. Next, we're gonna move over to, uh, Councilwoman Tamira Moss.
I would like to thank everybody for taking their time to come out and voice their opinions and concerns. Happy Memorial Day to everyone, especially those who served, um, this country and served it well. Um, a special thank you to the Bogalusa Police Department, to the Fire Department, and those who serve in the endless, um, services as well. I commend all y'all for a job well done. I'm sorry that I had to keep leaving in and out of the, the meeting, but I was being obedient. And I'm just gonna ask everyone to keep Mr. James Patterson and his family. And pray that this time, Mr. Kenny and his family. And everyone that may be going through something. We see people, but we don't walk in their shoes. We don't know what a person may be going through. We're here today and we're gone today. And let's not take that lightly. To the graduation class of two thousand twenty-four, just wanna commend the students, the parents, and everyone who played a role to making sure from pre-K to college level. Y'all did a good job, job well done. My heart is heavy and I just ask y'all to continue to pray for the city of Bogalusa. Pray for our mayor and his family. Pray for my colleagues and their family. Pray for Ms. Brenzler, she has a job that's never stopping. And I just commend her for going above and beyond and answering the call of duty even when she's off. It takes a special person, a person who have patience. She have to go back, listen to the recording, and type every word that we say. And I know I can be long-winded. So let's just continue to love one another, try to help one another as the best that we can, and just keep each other in prayer. And to Mr. James, I commend you for being here. When I call, you can. And you're going through so much, so much that people don't even know. So God, may God continue to bless you and strengthen you. I had a word of prayer with your wife, who's outside those doors. And it's gonna be okay. It's gonna be okay. Yes. Thank y'all for coming and God bless y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Temples.
Um, I just have a few things tonight. I'd like to say congratulations to all the graduates, um, and I wish you all the luck in all of your future endeavors. Um, the American Legion is doing the Memorial Day Ceremony Monday at eleven. It is always a wonderful ceremony, I hope to see you all there. And the last thing I'd like to say, and I normally don't say anything, and I do that for a reason. Um, I don't feel like I need to repeat myself or repeat council members' comments. You know, we don't need to hear the same thing over and over. The last thing I'd like to say to mine is, remember that the children are watching us. They're watching us, they're watching our behavior. So I want everybody in this room and everybody at home watching this video, what lessons are you teaching our children by your behavior?
Yep. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Temples. Councilwoman Warrior Katz, go ahead, man.
I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Thank you for your presence here tonight. I try to learn from each experience that I had walked through. And give glory to God for the experience that I might be walking through. I would like to say, uh, Happy Memorial Day to all of our veterans. God bless them and thank you for attendance. Uh, Ms., Ms., uh, Dixon, I think she's left already, she's, she has her, she's been here? Oh, alright. She's been working with Lisa Popps here for so many years. And, uh, God bless you and your endeavors, Ms. Dixon, on that. Could keep the work up on the grant writing as well for the city of Bogalusa. Uh, I want to also say thank you to, uh, Council base for passing the sewage, these pumps. We need these pumps, we need minimal pumps as Mr., Mr., uh, Patterson indicated. We have what, sixty-one, sixty-one pumps? We're in an old town and these pumps are going out one by one. So as God gives us, uh, as we find the funds, we replace the pumps, um, as well. Um, I want to also say, uh, thanks to, uh, uh, if you still here, Mr. Bailey, thank you for finding the money too, Mr. Bailey. I had given him an idea of where we could find, uh, this forty-four thousand dollars, so. But he made it through, this week, he's calling today and that he know they were preparing a PO for these pumps. Uh, my comment is, uh, on the budget is that we are constantly, as we get changes to the budget, we are constantly updating the budget. Mr. Bailey is doing his due diligence and updating this budget. We have a police department, uh, good from what I understand. We have a fire department, good. And the public works department, from what I understand, at our last, uh, meeting, budget meeting, their representatives came in, uh, last week. So I'm, I'm hoping they're nearly finished with their negotiations. We have to get our internal people straight as well as the action budget as well. So I, I think it is, we, we are getting close, very close with this budget. And back I'm giving Mr. Bailey to see if we have, uh, amendment, amendment five. We are amendment five. Well, we're on with the four, but he may have amendment five together for us. Where we can review it, uh, if he does this week. I will be hosting another finance meeting. Everyone is welcome to come to the finance meeting as well. Uh, as far as our, uh, twenty twenty-two closeout, we are nearing that as well. With the twenty twenty-two closeout with our county speed eight, I do intend to be each Wednesday. And we're one to three weeks out. After that process, uh, once again, let's go to our, our CPA for her, her political provision. And then it goes to, let's say, others. So, but we have to work on twenty twenty-three, it's coming up. That closeout is due in June thirtieth. And then we have to get started on, well, as I said, passing the twenty twenty-four budget. And then we gotta start rolling on twenty twenty-five budget. That's coming up, that's due by, what, December? December, the end of this year. So it's, it's nonstop as far as budgeting here in the city of Bogalusa. But just bear with us, coming and, and, uh, and to our meeting, to our monitoring meetings, you have any questions? Uh, Mr. Bailey's indicated, you get with him directly. Uh, or any of the department heads directly, but we, we are getting close. We know we need to pass this budget, but we have to have some things in order as Councilman Orey indicated. Uh, the council, you know, we produce, we, we looking through these numbers as well as the department heads are looking through these numbers. Well, as soon as I get with Mr. Bailey, I will be announcing it. I need to know what he's done with all of his revisions, most of his revisions. And I will be announcing it and be on the doors and, and, uh, it'll be, you know, generally announced.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Julian, for asking. Um, I think that's all we have. Thank you, everyone. Uh, just thank for your patience with me today. God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Warrior Katz. And finally, I want to tell you something that I believe that we have made great strides in the budget in the last three meetings that we've had in the month of May, on May second, ninth, and tenth. And I want, uh, say to, uh, Mr. Bailey and Councilman Case, been working together. And, uh, and I will tell you that, uh, uh, I like some of the things that I'm seeing in the budget. And I will tell you, since the, we get together and making the final revisions and all that, uh, she will make an announcement when we're gonna put this on the agenda. And, uh, we gotta have a finance meeting first, uh, before that happens.
It has to be presented to the public.
Yeah, it has to be presented to the public. And we want to give the public enough time for input on that. So with that said, uh, be, keep this, this upcoming Memorial Day, keep our veterans in mind. My dad is a vet, uh, a decorated veteran in Vietnam. When he came back to this country, nobody welcomed him to the United States. Right back, they were telling him to take the uniform off because the world had changed. And then he finally got his homecoming before he died at one twelve. And it was sad, it took that many years, but, um, I don't have to rehash about Vietnam. Everybody sitting in this room knows about that particular war and then other wars, uh, since then. But keep our veterans, both the fallen and mine, and the ones that's living. And let's make this place a great place in Bogalusa. Now, I know tonight was a contentious meeting, uh, but, um, uh, keep in mind, regardless, I don't hate anybody here. Uh, I just want to end this between all of us, the back and forth, and make it a calm business meeting just like now, right now. Keep it calm and let's get to production of the Bogalusa business. As you know, we have those stations that are broke down, we need to get those fixed. You just don't know what quality of those are. Uh, I used to be a, a former apprentice and I can tell you, it's top quality right now. Cause that's all of City Bogalusa that's affecting right now. I want to thank everybody for coming and I hope everyone here has a wonderful week. Thank you. Good night.